Welcome to our March 2nd Board of Education Meeting for Long Beach Unified School District. I'm going to ask our student school board member Ivory, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Of course. Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Ivory. And we'll hear a little bit more from you in a few minutes. So we welcome those who are here for the purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name on the agenda and the item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or staff. The board met in closed session today regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda. In closed session, the board voted to approve a resignation retirement agreement and general release with a classified employee resolving all claims between the parties and providing for consideration. The vote was unanimous with all five members of the board voting to approve. Public hearing, we have none today. Like to call for agenda items for separate action adoption of the agenda as posted. And I know we have a couple of proposed amendments, right Dr. Baker?
Yes, please. I would like to request that you add item 19.2 for administrative assignments under superintendent's items.
And Ms. Crackhead, I believe we have another one?
Excuse me, yes. I'd like to add Mr. Rigo Manzo under communications, number 13 for communications.
Okay, so that would put that as item 13.2. Any other proposed agenda items or changes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the two proposed agenda items?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Crackhead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So that passes 5-0, including the new two items. Approval of minutes from our February 16th meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Otto, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Crackhead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I will abstain because I was not here for February 16th meeting. So that passes 4-0 with one abstention. Introduction of our student school board member Ivory Gomez from Browning.
Good evening distinguished members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Baker, and all of the executive staff and the guests here tonight. And thank you to my parents also for being here to support me and Ms. Ishikawa as well. I am Ivory Alyssa Gomez and I am an 11th grade ASB representative from Browning High School and also a member of the Browning soccer team. Things have been changing rapidly at Browning High School. Dr. Romat has done a tremendous job leading the herd and we are very proud for what she has done for us students. As you all may know, Browning currently focuses on early college. Right now, we currently have three LBCC courses being taught on our campus right now by actual college professors. Our students are working very hard to earn their college credits. On our campus, we have the fabulous Donald Williams who has organized a basketball league for our theme schools. Soto, McBride, Polly Pal, and Reed have all come together on Friday nights to celebrate and watch our teams play. Our basketball team has brought lots of pride to our school and once the season ends, it will be time for soccer and my teammates and I will be able to show off our skills. In other Bison news, we are continuing to host our advisory board mixers. This gives our students an opportunity to meet and mingle with to meet and mingle with active culinary and hospitality leaders in our community. A few of our students have even had job offers from the advisory board mixers. In culinary, nine of our students entered into a cooking into a cooking competition for C cap, Careers Through Culinary Arts Program in February. Our five finalists will be competing at the end of March against over 30 other students chefs to see if they can win a full scholarship to culinary school. They will have to prove their ability to recreate chicken, sausages, and a crepe with pastry cream and chocolate drizzle. Browning also participated in LBUSD's first theme school winter formal. McBride, Renaissance, Soto, Reed, Kams, and EPHS joined us at the OC hangar for an awesome night of dance and fun. Our students enjoyed DJ, photo booths, air hockey, football games, and the best part, an In-N-Out truck and a dessert truck as well. In April, all of our culinary one students will be visiting Los Cerritos Ranch House in Long Beach where they will learn the history behind the historical landmark as well as learn how to make their famous marmalade and jams. We hope to become a partner with Los Cerritos to be their primary processor for marmalades and jams. If we are lucky enough, our students will be able to develop their own flavors of jams. May 21st will be our first official senior prom night. This dance will be hosted by our LBUSD themed schools and held at California Science Center. We are so excited to give our juniors and seniors a chance to dance the night away. On May 26th, we plan to celebrate our seniors with the senior awards night. This will be hosted by my class, the class of 2023. Most of our seniors will be receiving medallions to signify their achievements throughout their Browning careers, graduation course from participating in clubs, and a dinner they will always remember. Our graduation is set for June 15th. We are excited to wish our seniors luck as they venture into the big world. This is our second graduating class and we are happy to celebrate our Bison seniors. As the year comes to a close, we would like to thank the board and Superintendent Baker for all of your hard work and support during the school year and Dr. Romat for helping us find our Bison spirit. Thank you and go Bison's.
Thank you Ivory, wonderful job. I'm stuck on the marmalades and jams. That sounds like a cool podcast opportunity too. Ivory, we know you're a junior. So can you share a little bit about things that you're looking forward to in your senior year and/or after graduation?
Of course. For my senior year, I'm hoping to spend as much time as I can, especially with my teachers because since our school is so small, we build relationships from starting from freshman year going all the way to our senior year. And as well as participating in the events that will only happen once in a lifetime as well. And after college, after high school, I hope to go to college and attend a couple of courses that I am very interested in.
Can you share with us the courses?
Of course. One course I would hopefully be taking is going to be business, a business course as well as starting a foundation business and building it up into something bigger and also for real estate.
Very cool. Any thoughts or ideas about university or colleges that you'd like to attend?
Currently, right now, the Long Beach College.
Long Beach City College?
Yes.
Awesome, beautiful. Board members, any other questions and/or thoughts about marmalade and jam?
Well, I love marmalade and jam. But that's so smart that you're taking advantage of the Long Beach College promise.
Yes.
I hope everybody knows about that. But you're so smart to be taking advantage of that.
I wanted to hear a little bit more about this soccer team of yours. How are you guys doing so far?
So far, we have been practicing three days a week and we're doing pretty good, especially with team bonding skills and learning how to advance our skills as well on the field.
And last but not least, what is the most exciting thing that you got to participate in this year?
This year, I'd say our first winter formal because it's the first one I have attended in high school and I've got to meet new people as well because of all the schools that were combined with us as well.
Winter formals are the best.
Yeah.
And we saw those social media posts from the winter formal. It looked like a great time.
So just a little background on the marmalade. So I am a board member for Rancho Los Cerritos and we are having a discussion. They have a lot of citrus on site and they've had marmalade in the past. And when someone asked why we weren't having marmalade, they said they just didn't have a way to produce it that was cost effective. And I'm like, so I know some students who might be interested and connected the Rancho with our pathways team in the high school office. And this is super exciting to hear that this is coming to fruition because it's one of those really wonderful Long Beach connections. And when we can work together, we can do great things for students. So I am super excited. I'm going to find out when that day is. I'm going to come visit.
I think I hear a plug for a label named Megan Kerr's world famous marmalade and jam.
Not at all. But the Rancho does have, they partner with local breweries and they have a beer with their citrus and all kinds of things. But I'm super proud that our Long Beach Unified students are going to be a part of that history.
Thank you Ivory. So glad to have you here tonight. And we may have a long meeting tonight. So if you want to seize yourself early, you're welcome to do so. And then do you want to acknowledge mom and dad in attendance here?
Of course. Thank you guys for bringing me here and supporting me and calming down my nerves if I come here.
Thank you for coming. Good job. Good job. Excuse me. Okay, let's move on to our next agenda item. And we have communications. Mr. Larkin, I saw you here earlier today. So this is our Measure E and Measure K Bond Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report.
All right, well, thank you very much. And happy to see everyone's eyes today. I can't say faces, but we're getting closer to that opportunity. Back in the day when I was a sales rep working in the medical device field, surgery, I was wearing a mask most of the day. And you got the chance to look at people's eyes and be able to tell their expressions and what they were feeling from that. So if we got anything from COVID, at least we have something to focus on and really read people's eyes. But the eyes, what are the pathway to the heart? So nice seeing all of you. I'm here to first of all, present the information regarding how we're handling the money related to Measure D and Measure E. So first of all, I'm just going to read a little bit of some of this stuff. Good evening, Board President, distinguished board members, superintendent, Long Beach Unified School District staff and members of the community. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to your leadership navigating through this whole COVID process, which ended up being a lot longer than we thought, focusing on the needs of the students based on science while adapting to all the different conditions that are happening on a nearly weekly basis. So I admire all the work that you've done and I know it's been difficult. Even as a business owner myself, it's been challenging for us. David Miranda, he's Executive Director of the Long Beach USD Facilities and Development Planning Office. And I have to say, my job is extremely easy because of all the work that that team does. I mean, they take all the stress out of our decision making because they're pretty much on point. You'll see through this report evidence of that. So as Chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee, I'm honored to present the annual report highlighting the achievements of the district's bond program for the fiscal year spanning July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. The 2021 fiscal year, students back to classroom based teaching followed unprecedented shift to remote learning at all Long Beach USD campuses during the global COVID-19 pandemic. Many students returned to new or renovated learning spaces, including Milliken High School's 50,000 square foot classroom building and Jordan High School's modernization, modernized auditorium and library. These projects exemplified the 21st century learning base spaces needed to prepare our students for college and careers. The Citizens Oversight Committee held four virtual meetings to review expenditures, financial statements, staff reports, and various capital projects funded by the district's Measure K and Measure E bonds. As in previous years, the COC was impressed with the district's meticulous record keeping and continuous budget balancing. For the ninth consecutive year, an independent audit firm granted the district its highest rating for financial accountability and performance. The findings affirm the committee's view on the district's compliance in Article 13A, Section 1B 3 of the California Constitution regarding the appropriate use and spending of bond proceeds. The COC is proud to oversee a program that is helping build brighter futures for Long Beach USD students. On behalf of all COC members, and I've got a good team that's reviewed all this information with me, which takes a load off me as well. And behalf of the steadfast commitments to the students of our community, this is my report. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. In the meantime, all of you have copies or should have copies of the report that we have. They did a fantastic job of breaking it down in very simple language that everyone can understand, including myself. Our attention spans have gotten a lot smaller. So the main points are on the report. And if you want to get into the weeds, the website has every bit of weeds that you can look at, including the fertilizer. So any questions from anyone? Other than that, this is my final report. Colleagues?
I would just like to thank you and the committee for your service.
Well, thank you very much. And I'll carry that. I think they're on television watching me. They told me they'd be here in spirit. So in spirit, hello. Well, thank you very much for your time. And with that, I wish you all a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. And thank you for sharing the report highlights with us. Appreciate the work you're doing. So we added another item under communications, Mr. Rigo Manzo.
Thank you, School Board, for taking the time to hear from me today. My name is Rigo Barto Manzo and I am here on behalf of the Bleeding Disorders Community to call to your attention that March is Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. I am wearing a red tie in honor of this month. What does it mean for a person to have a bleeding disorder? Well, a bleeding disorder is any inherited chronic medical condition that causes a person to not heal properly from bleeding episodes caused by an injury, cuts, bruises, or joint pain. This is a very simple explanation to a complicated subject. But what is important to note is that there are many different types of conditions that fall under the bleeding disorders umbrella. I myself have hemophilia A severe, which is a genetic bleeding disorder that prevents me from naturally producing factor VIII healing proteins in my blood. The more common bleeding disorder among the community is von Willebrand disease. That is more to do with the vehicle protein that carries the healing protein to the site of the bleed. There are more bleeding disorders to list out, but those are the more common ones. Treatments used to help combat these deficiencies vary. But generally, we use clotting factor concentrates that can be infused prophylactically. Other treatments may also involve topical products, nasal sprays, or fresh frozen plasma that is administered in a hospital setting. The average annual cost of medication for someone that has severe hemophilia like myself is approximately $250,000 to $300,000. For a patient with an inhibitor, the cost can be over $1 million. And so you know, an inhibitor is an antibody that can sometimes develop in a patient if their bodies reject the factor because it thinks it's a foreign agent. I can go into more details on any of the topics if the board wishes for me to do so later. I am not a doctor, I'm just a patient. But I've had to be an expert of this matter in order to advocate for myself my entire life. The rest of the world around me never had a clue of what I was going through unless I told them or experienced a bleeding episode at my school. And that is why I'm glad to be speaking to you today. To ask the board to partner with me, the Hemophilia Council of California, which I am a board member for, and the Hemophilia Foundation of Southern California in recognizing March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. In 1986, the year I was born, Ronald Reagan designated March as Hemophilia Awareness Month, which then turned into Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month to include all the conditions. Awareness is important to us because we need more people to understand these conditions. In California, hemophilia affects at least 4,000 people and von Willebrand disease affects at least 360,000. The rarity of these disorders is what makes it challenging to sustain awareness, but we will never give up. Shining a light in the schools here in Long Beach can help us discover patients that may not be aware of resources available to them. Around 1% of California's population is affected by these bleeding disorders, which means the Long Beach Unified School District could potentially be educating almost 1,000 students with such disorders. The HTC and the Hemophilia Foundation have resources that can help parents have access to more information about new and groundbreaking treatments, health insurance help, as well as how to establish a 504 plan with their child's school. New patients can also be directed to a local HTC, which stands for Hemophilia Treatment Center. A HTC is equipped with expert hematologists and provides a patient with comprehensive medical care tailored to whichever type of bleeding disorder they may be experiencing. Understandably, the COVID-19 pandemic has made other medical concerns take a backseat. But our community is determined to continue raising our hands so that the public is better informed about bleeding disorders. More awareness will ensure continued support in the legislative sector, allowing us to have access to uninterrupted treatments. As far as our schools here in Long Beach, more awareness will make it possible to reach out to any student that may be suffering in silence. I hope that we can provide that student with a bridge to a supportive and loving community built by overcoming tragedy and hardship. We're special alone, but powerful together. With that being said, can we count on you, the Long Beach School Board, in helping us fight the good fight? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Can you make us aware where students, parents, family members, caregivers can get more information and resources regarding bleeding disorders?
Yeah, so we have websites. The Hemophilia Foundation of Southern California has got a website where they have education materials there as well as the council, the Hemophilia Council of California has materials also. So if the board wishes for me to forward you any information, I'm more than happy to do so.
Please, please do. And I'll open it up to questions and or comments from our board members.
Oh, thank you for coming and making us aware of the Blood Disorder Awareness Month for March.
Thank you, Rigo. Good seeing you. We will move on to our recognitions and acknowledgements and our student staff and school celebrations. Mr. Itzen?
Hi, my name is Jay Alcady. I am a senior here at Cabrillo High School. In my middle school, I attended Stevens. And then my elementary school, I attended Gartfield. I am a part of CEDU, which is our Cabrillo Engineering Program. I'm also in ASB. I am ASB Vice President. And I have been in ASB ever since my freshman year. ASB made me break out my shell. It definitely was an experience that I needed to go through. Joining ASB and joining a student council in general is just something that you definitely need growing up. You definitely get your communication skills in and you definitely get to, you just get to be you. I applied to eight different colleges this year. I'm going to be majoring in computer science. And that's something that I've always been looking forward to ever since middle school. And I never would have thought that I'll be here in this position where I'm just like, I'm a senior. This is happening. LBUSD definitely gives us great opportunities. It's a really great experience knowing that all the teachers here in LBUSD care about each and every student that they have and build a bond with each and every one of us. It's really a great experience when they tell you, like, you can be yourself, like, you can be unique. It doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter where you came up from. It just matters that you know who you are.
Beautiful. Yeah. Highlighting the importance of building bonds and a caring culture at our school. So thank you, Jay, and the entire staff at Cabrillo and all the students as well. We will move on to item 15, public testimony on items listed on the agenda. Letitia, just want to make sure we didn't have any items on the agenda. Okay? So we'll move on to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. And Mr. Suarez, can you ask our first speaker to come in? Good evening, welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Raul Sadio and I'm running for mayor of Long Beach. As a child, I came to this country not speaking a word of English. And one of the shows that really helped me get to that level of speaking English was a show called Captain Planet. It was a show about a superhero who fought polluters and defended our right to a clean earth. 20 years ago, while I was attending high school, it became even more evident that our planet was in trouble because we were seeing the polar ice caps melt. We were seeing polar bears drown. Today, we rely more than ever on our leaders to grab the bull by the horns and implement changes that our planet needs to address climate change. Now outside, there is a group of young people with similar hopes and dreams that we all had growing up. We can make renewable energy a reality making the appropriate investment, which will not only save the district money in the long run, but it will also serve to show our students and the parents that we care about the future, that we care about the future that they will inherit. Please set the example. Show California, show other school districts that we in Long Beach can lead the way. I urge you to stand with us. Make renewable energies your priority now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lily Palmer and I'm a student at Milliken High School. During the 2020 to 2021 fiscal school year, LBUSD spent $8.5 million in the electricity sector alone. This added up to 12,103 metric tons of carbon emissions. As a sophomore in high school who was raised in the midst of a climate crisis, I've grown up hearing about how drastically we need to reduce carbon emissions and soon. The statistic I mentioned is incredibly disheartening. I know that LBUSD does not want, oh, does, sorry. I know that LBUSD does want to cut down on carbon emissions and we are grateful for the work that has been done towards this already. However, I understand that money is a barrier towards this. Those $8.5 million do not need to be added to. So I am here to tell you about incentives provided at a state level and a federal level that can lessen or even eliminate the financial barrier. A few statewide energy programs include the California Energy Commission, the Bright Schools Program, Energy Partnership Program, and public interest energy research grants, all of which offer financial aid to help cover the cost of switching to clean energy. Additionally, with the upcoming Federal Bipartisan Infrastructure Act under President Biden, there will soon be money available for the school district for energy efficiency and electric buses. We have worked with LBUSD's Facilities Department and added a qualifier to our resolution that serves as a safeguard and claims that if the 100% clean energy resolution is passed, the transition to clean energy will take place as funding is available. We want you to know that energy incentives and pathways are available. We want you to know that energy incentives and pathways are available. We can also work with an ESCO, an energy savings company, to help us find additional incentives. Contacts with such companies actually promise the school district money. Over the past couple of weeks, our campaign has met with facilities directors and energy leaders from all across the school district, including LAUSD's Facility Director and that of a small New York district that has also made the commitment to clean energy. All this to say that we have options. We can look at state and federal incentive plans for clean energy. We can work with ESCOs. This transition off of fossil fuels is possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Simon. I'm from Sunrise Movement, Los Angeles. I attended the climate rally a few months ago where I had the pleasure to speak to two board members. I live a few miles north in LA, past a thick layer of oil wells. And in my city, we transitioned our public school district, LAUSD, to renewable energy. And then in 2020, I helped found the International Green Schools Campaign. I've spent the past couple of years working across the state to win climate action. I've seen young people organize their communities time and time again for the right to a livable future. And time and time again, after a lot of work and a lot of time, and sometimes after some disappointment, I've seen governments and school boards listen, because how could you not? For my grandparents who are living in a fire danger zone in NorCal, for my friends that breathe toxic air from oil wells just feet from their houses, for me and my life and the places and people I love, I need you to act. And of all the campaigns and movements I've been a part of, the Long Beach School District is in a perfect position to implement the kind of changes we need to win a livable future for my generation. I can imagine a Long Beach Unified that leads the way across the region in renewable energy and climate justice, a Long Beach Unified that cares about our futures and does what they know is right and fair and practical. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rohan Reddy, and I am a junior at Poly. Los Angeles Unified School District, Huntington Beach City Unified School District, Seattle Public Schools, Miami Dade County Public Schools, Salt Lake City School District, Oakland, San Francisco, St. Louis, San Diego, the list goes on. All of these school districts across the country have already committed to transitioning to clean renewable energy. Districts that have already begun switching off of fossil fuels are saving millions of dollars. In the case of LAUSD, seven pilot programs have recently begun that are saving $800,000 per year. Over the course of the next 25 years, their district is estimating savings of over $25 million through installation of solar panels. San Francisco Unified School District, through their energy reform with the goal of carbon neutrality by 2040, is estimating savings of $2 million per year. Many school districts have entered into power purchase agreements, or PPAs, where districts partner with solar companies to install solar panels on site with little to no upfront cost to schools. This option has also saved millions for districts in Colton, Fresno, and others. The financial benefits of transitioning to clean energy are proven and obvious. If we can save money and energy while also saving the world, why not do it? Thank you and have a good evening.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Lily Morse. I currently live in Bozeman, Montana, but I was raised 15 out of 16 years of my life in Long Beach, and before I moved, I was in the Poly-Pace Program. I am the Executive Director of the International Green Schools Campaign Organization, and Long Beach Green Schools Campaign is one of our local initiatives. We work with schools all over the US and the world, and Long Beach Green Schools Campaign is leading the way. It has been my absolute honor to watch and support Long Beach Green Schools Campaign grow, persevere, and flourish through the almost two years they've been fighting for LBUSD to run on renewable energy. As these students and fellow members have shared before me, it is clear there are numerous benefits to this transition. Before me, Lily Palmer shared that we admit 12,000 metric tons of carbon emissions each year, which contributes to the same issues that cause respiratory issues and lifelong conditions for LBUSD students. In addition, Rohan shared that, not if, but when we transition, we could save millions of dollars. LAUSD could save $25 million in the next 25 years. That's $1 million a year. And since LAUSD is the second biggest district in the US, transitioning LBUSD should be a lot more feasible. If they can do it, we can. As Simon and Raul shared, the time is now for LBUSD to make this change, to commit, to join the movement and stop climate change. For students of LBUSD, for other districts who are inspired to make the commitment, and for students across the globe. These students who I stand beside are trailblazers, leaders, and changemakers that stand out here every week demanding that you take action. We wish you to be the leaders you've taught us to be and commit to renewable energy now, just like our education, your future, or our future on a livable earth is in your hands. I came here all the way from Montana to share, to stand with them in power, to demand LBUSD to transition to 100% clean renewable energy. LBUSD can be a leader to show what students can do. After all, isn't it a school's job to develop the leaders of the future? These students entered the district to learn and are going forth to serve right in front of your eyes, and I hope you will support them. Let's come together, support these leaders, not just of the future, but of now, and commit LBUSD to a brighter, greener, and more equitable future. 100% clean renewable energy now. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome, Dr. Kelly.
Good evening, board members and staff. I'm Dr. Kelly, President of the Teachers Association of Long Beach. What a difficult two years we've had, and yet financially, with all the extra funding from the state and federal governments, things have turned out better than anyone could have anticipated. We understand declining enrollment and that this extra funding is not ongoing. We also understand there's a huge reserve and some of that must be spent down. It shouldn't go to new programs, especially without teacher input. Teachers know students need time to reorient and fill in gaps without constant testing pressures. They know that decisions should be made based on data, but they should not be, there should not be more testing than teaching. This is the time to remember the cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians, aides, teachers, librarians, nurses, bless our nurses. Counselors, psychologists, SLPs, and many administrators and staff have also risen to the occasion, coming to work every day, filling in for those who are sick or quarantining, substituting during conference periods, supporting contact tracing and testing. Some were angry about being mandated to be vaccinated in masks, and others were terrified for their family's health, but they came to work. Our budget and funding is based on priorities. As enrollment declines, I know there's a plan for how many classified and certificated employees would have to be let go when we get to certain levels of enrollment. It's priorities. We know we're a top-heavy district. How many supervisors of supervisors do we need? Your employees provide a clean environment and nutritious food so kids can learn, nursing support, and extra support to students who can't manage on their own. We even drive some of them to school. We provide mental health and specialist interventions for those who need more. These should be the priorities, especially classroom aides. The lack of their support has created dangerous situations in many of our special aid classrooms. And remember that whatever compensation certificated gets, admin gets too. Many managers and staff have shown themselves to be team players, contact tracing, substituting classrooms, and even custodial runs. We have had great support from Human Resources, Facilities, and Employee Relations. They too deserve acknowledgement and compensation for helping to keep the ship afloat. We do not have a Taub contract. We have a contract between the district and Taub. Both groups have agreed to these terms, but we should be making curricular and operational decisions with real input from the people who will implement those decisions, which often appear to be theoretical. You must admit that many of you have not had the responsibility of a classroom since before Common Core was the focus. The job has changed, the students have changed. We all want LBUSD to be successful. It's all about the priorities. I'm told we are close to a settlement, and I hope that we can reach one on Friday. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Morrison. I'm a teacher at McBride High School. I'm here representing the Teachers Association of Long Beach. I'm a member of our bargaining team that's been meeting with the district, negotiating our contracts, and that's what I'd like to speak about this evening. We've been negotiating for several months, as I'm sure you know, and as always, they're very cordial and respectful, and we've made a lot of progress. But we've come to a point where the progress has kind of stopped. It's the point where we start talking about our salaries. And, you know, the background to this, of course, is that teachers, along with everybody else, have come through a really rough couple of years. You know that, I don't have to remind you. You tell us, and we believe you, that you appreciate what we've been doing. Generally, the public appreciates what we've been doing. I know you get an occasional crackpot comes in here who doesn't, but by and large. But for teachers, really, the appreciation is going to come down to whether we're getting a decent pay raise. Teachers watch the news, they see inflation's running at 7.5%, they see the social security cost of living increases 5.9%, California proposed budget increase for education is 5.3%. So they're the kinds of figures that people have in their minds when they talk to us as their representatives about what they expect for a pay raise. And that's not, that's not where we are in the negotiations. We don't think we're being unreasonable. We think the districts can afford to give us a suitable pay raise. The state is awash with money, the district is awash with money. We're talking about a reserve of millions, and for those, maybe you are listening who don't know exactly, it's not millions, it's not even tens of millions, it's hundreds of millions that the district has in reserve. We think our offer is prudent. We have no interest in an insolvent district. In the past, when we've had to, we've accepted no pay raises or very small pay raises because we knew the circumstances demanded that. But we're not in those circumstances now. There is money, and the teachers deserve the pay raise and expect it, frankly. We're not too far apart. There's really no reason why we shouldn't settle pretty soon, and my ask to you here tonight, before my time runs out, is to nudge your bargaining team along a little bit. If you've given them parameters that they've run up against, I would respectfully suggest that you reconsider those parameters, and let's get this deal done. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name's Adrian. I wanted to come here tonight to thank you, thank you all for lifting the mask mandates in our schools. I know that's going to be coming up pretty soon for us. I have two boys who go to elementary school here, and they've started a mask off-day countdown. We have seven days left in school for that. As we heard earlier from comments today, there's a lot of our students who are concerned about our environment, holding signs and saying things like, "I love Mother Earth," other things of this nature. Lifting the mask mandate will be a huge step in protecting our planet and minimizing the waste caused by unnecessary masking in a non-medical, non-sterile environment, where so many studies have shown us the ineffectiveness of cloth masks and surgical masks in stopping the spread of this virus. Thank you for leading, and this is a preemptive thank you. Thank you for leading the greater Los Angeles County area in not following through with a vaccine mandate, which our governor has discussed. In recent past, we have seen Long Beach Unified School District look towards LAUSD for guidance and take their lead in different COVID policies and practices as they've been coming up these past two years. Long Beach Unified, I really look towards you to lead with saying no to a COVID vaccine, COVID vaccine mandate, because with a statistically 0% chance of severe illness or death with our children, it is an illogical mandate, and you all see that. So thank you. We, as parents, realize that you are the policymakers and that ultimately, your pen goes to the paper for these things. So thank you again, that this is a very difficult decision that you all will have to make, and I hope to see you again in meetings in the future. There are other parents that I know of that do have other alternative plans for our schooling for our children, and so I do hope that I will be seeing you, and thank you.
Good evening, thank you, welcome.
Greeting board, President Dr. Juan Benitez, board members, Superintendent Dr. Jill Baker, and executive staff. My name, my name is Anthony Torn Guerrero, and I'm the Kamai Parents Association Youth Peer Leader. This is not an agenda item for March 2nd. Thank you for having the thought exchange video in Kamai. We viewed the video with our community members. The parents did value the opportunity to participate in the thought exchange survey last year. The parents, however, wanted to bring up that they did not, that they did experience some challenges completing the surveys. Parents have expressed that the survey was not only available to them for a limited time, but this year, they did not see the deadline for the survey because they need to have enough time to read all of the information and instruction to ensure that they avoid confusion before answering the questions. Another concern that was shared pertains to the goals for the data collection and how it will be used to address needs of the community when the data is finally collected and compiled. What is the timeline for the implementation for the recommendations being shared? For example, the parents we talked to wanted to know if some of the budget will be allocated for the Kamai Dual Language Immersion Program, and when will the pilot for the Kamai Dual Language Immersion Program begin? They want to make sure that the input they provided throughout the years are producing momentum toward a language education program that will allow their children to learn about their heritage, their culture, and their mother tongue. Kamai Parents Association is proud to make donations to help fund 20 tickets for 18 students and two chaperones for the Kamai Club in Milliken High School to see Encore the Lost Empire 3D at the California Science Center, so they can learn about their rich heritage of their country, of their ancestors. Therefore, the Kamai history should be taught in Long Beach Unified School District side by side with the Kamai Dual Language Immersion Program. If any of you have any spare time, please spend your time to see Encore 3D at the California Science Center, to understand why we strongly advocate for the Kamai Dual Language Immersion Program at the Long Beach Unified School District curriculum. We will follow up with boards, the school board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Guerrero, quick question. The issues were with the thought exchange on the community visioning process or our LCAP budget engagement process?
Community visioning.
Okay. Is that something we can check into, Dr. Baker? Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Judith Nguyen, and I'm a parent of one of the students from Buffam Total Learning Center. As the school year has progressed, I've noticed that more and more students have been added to the class, but the number of aides have stayed the same. I believe that the lack of support has become a detriment to our students' growth and development. I don't believe that the student-to-teacher ratio is sufficient to support a class of the size that it's become, and we've seen the students' progress suffer as a result. What's more, the lack of proper and adequate support has made the classroom unsafe. There have been multiple reports of pushing, kicking in the classroom due to the lack of supervision. The ratio of three to 17 students, and I've even heard one to 17 students for a severe to moderate class during the past week, just because a few aides have been called out. This makes it increasingly difficult struggle for them to meet their needs. The student's unique needs fosters a dangerous environment for our students. As you are well aware, our children have the right to a free and appropriate public education. With the lack of support that their class is currently facing, we do not believe this need is being met. We understand that there is at least 10 vacancies for aides at Buffam. We urge the board to consider an increase in work hours and benefits offered for aides to attract qualified support to fill these positions. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello, good evening. Thank you all for the, excuse me, for the opportunity to address you. My name is Ryan Dennis. Uh, I'm the parent of a four-year-old daughter at Buffham Total Learning Center. Um, I believe you just heard from my wife. I'm here to voice the same concerns, uh, that she's come here to voice tonight. We're both just hoping there's some way that we can work together with the school, her teachers, the administrators, the district to, um, find some, find more support, uh, in the classroom, uh, at Buffham TLC. Uh, since our daughters began there, um, it's been a wonderful school. Um, we're thankful for that she even has the opportunity to be there in the first place. Uh, but over the last couple of months, uh, it's come to our attention that, uh, at, at least the classroom that our daughter is in is lacking support that seems critical for it to continue to function in a way where everybody, all of the children in the class are really going to get the most out of it. And I understand that there are a lot of classes in the district, there are a lot of schools, there are a lot of people with a lot of different needs that need to try to be met. Um, we just wanted to start to, to add our voices to the conversation uh, and to highlight this particular campus, uh, and this particular need. Um, I just want to add, both my wife and I are, are doing everything we can to become parent volunteers at this school, um, in as many classrooms as, as we can, at least as I can. Um, I'm not sure that's going to be quite enough help for them, um, at least from the, the recent conversations we've had. Um, thank you all very much for your time. Thank you for listening. Good evening.
Thank you. Is this something we can look into, Dr. Baker, that our concerns expressed about Buffham? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Denise Kramer and this is my first go around doing this, but I had a passionate feeling, um, about the dates of graduation that they've been set. I am a single mother and it is my pride and joy to have my kids graduating. I have a senior at Polly High School and I have an eighth grader at Stanford Middle School. And the high school was set for June 14th and then low and behold, the Stanford date comes out at June 14th. And I say, okay. Well, it turns out that there was an hour gap in between. So that stressed me out in general. But then I heard that that got retracted and it's going to be rescheduled. So my question is, I know it's a huge undertaking. I'm, you know, I'm sure I'm well aware of that, but there's got to be a way where things are, I, I just feel like the high schools are obviously the priority, so we schedule those first. But then the middle schools and the elementary schools, there's going to be very few people that care to go to two middle school graduations and two elementary school graduations. But there are a lot of people in shoes like mine. So I'm concerned that, you know, again, it hasn't been scheduled yet the time, but what if they overlap? I mean, what do I tell my children that I have to pick whose graduation I'm going to go to? This is a milestone in their lives and I just think that there's got to be a way. I, again, I understand with, you know, finding places and all that's got to be difficult. But if we can just look at the three different high school, middle school, and elementary school as a lump sum and kind of make sure that those three, if possible, do not overlap. Um, again, I know it's a huge undertaking, but I'm just, it's a passionate thing for me because I'm just feeling very torn at the moment and I know I'm not the only one that's going to have that feeling, so. I want to thank you for your time and thank you for everything that you do. I want to thank, um, Mr. Otto and Mr. Miller because you guys cover the schools that are of concern to me. Um, but all of you do a phenomenal job and I'm so thrilled to have had my boys in the Long Beach Unified School District. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Vicki Rice. Um, can you hear me okay with this mask on? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, so I'm here with my daughter. We're each going to speak on different parts of this, but we're here, um, as a result of a complaint that we filed. And, uh, what I want to talk to you about first is what I found, and, and I think the timing's interesting. I'm just hearing that there's negotiations going on with the, um, with the, uh, union. So this may be very timely. I was looking at best practices for teaching and some guidelines. So I went to the TALB website and found, um, under, and I, I'm going to provide you, I meant to bring a copy of that page with me tonight, but I'm going to provide you via email a copy of it. But it's in the complaint, um, under, uh, contracts and rights and under the teacher's contract, Article 12, uh, evaluation procedure, letter I. It's called the Parent Guardian Complaint. And I was very surprised at what I found there and I do want to share that with you. Um, let me, let me go to my screenshots. Sorry, I should have had this one prepared, but, um, all right, what it says under there is, "When a parent or guardian complaint regarding an employee filed pursuant to ed code section 35160.5 is terminated at any level or is not sustained by the Board of Education, the Board shall direct that all written documentation relating to the complaint be destroyed pursuant to procedures provided for in Title V of the California Administrative Code." So I actually, in my practice, have had plenty of opportunities to file complaints against teachers and one of our remedies has been that the complaint be placed in their file so that it can be a part of the review process if the teacher needs to get some additional direction, help, whatever, as a proactive thing, not as a punitive thing. So we were really, really surprised, you know, to find this piece in there and find out that our complaint isn't going anywhere. It, so that's why we're bringing it to you. As a result of that, we also are requesting from the board, and I think this is the first step, so if we're wrong, let us know. We would like a closed session with you to go over our complaint. And we're hoping we'll get some direction if it's other than making this request right now, but we're officially making a request that we have a closed session with you. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Letitia, how are we doing on time?
We're 28 minutes.
Okay. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Amber Rice. I am, uh, Vicki's daughter and I am a Lakewood High School alumni. Um, grew up in Long Beach Unified. My daughter has grown up in Long Beach Unified. She's a current sophomore at Milliken, playing on the varsity softball team. She is a student athlete and excelling in school. And the reason I'm here for you today, obviously you got some information from my mom already, um, but we do have some problems, uh, with this specific teacher who you all see in the complaint. Um, I did drop off complaints for you guys last Friday. We do, we left some here also today for you guys to review. Um, and just the accountability to the teacher, for her to provide, not just to my daughter, but to all the students. Um, my daughter's not the only one having a problem with this individual teacher. Um, but we wanted to make sure that she's held accountable, just as my daughter would be held accountable. Being a student athlete, it's so important to have the solid foundation in the education, excelling. My daughter's going to be going to college and playing softball in college. She's applying for scholarships, we're visiting schools. And when she comes in to a class and is not taught the material, is not being a, being successful, there's a huge problem. And not having the accountability to the teacher and to do that for these students is, is, in my opinion, not acceptable. Uh, and as you guys have been told, the TALB contracts does not allow this, any complaints to teachers to follow them so that they can help them. This isn't about scolding them, but more about building them up and giving them the tools that they need to be better teachers. If my daughter, you know, she goes to school in the wrong shirt, she's pulled out of class, told to change her shirt, and maybe, and sometimes they're giving detentions for that. But this teacher's not held account, being held accountable for testing on material that's not taught. My daughter has all As in all of her classes with an exception of a B in history. And then you'll see her grade, uh, in the math class that is included in the packet that you guys received also. This is really important that, especially for her with student athletes and having these problems, that we have some more accountability going forward for all of our students and not just my daughter. And I hope that we can make a change for that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Suarez, I have one, one more here. Can we just make sure, Mr. Suarez, that, uh, Robert Collins is not waiting for us? Have, this is the last one?
He is.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes our time for public comment on items not listed on our agenda, uh, tonight. I want to thank everyone that came out, uh, tonight to provide public comment, uh, for us. Uh, we, we always express our gratitude and appreciation. This is a public meeting, so we're thankful, uh, for public comments. Uh, I'm also looking forward to our board workshop later this month where we will have an opportunity to hear more from our Long Beach students, Green Teams, uh, I'm sorry, Green Campaign, uh, students and our district staff's, uh, sustainability efforts. So thank you for everyone, uh, for their public comment tonight. We have no staff report tonight. Um, business items, Mr. Miller.
By the way, I like the title, "The Green Team." It reminds me of the early 1990s and Michael Jordan and all of those guys, but no. I'm looking forward to it as well. Uh, all right. So I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. First, with certificated personnel. In appointments, we have 34. In-service changes, we have 10. Leaves of absence, we have 7. Release of temporary contracted employees, we have 7. Resignations, we have 7. And retirements, we have 13. Those are the numbers for certificated personnel.
Move approval?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Craighead. Uh, any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 5-0. Classified personnel report.
All right, one more time. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent for classified and exempt personnel. Appointments, we have 88. Leaves of absence, we have 12. Abandonments, we have 2. Terminations, we have 1. Resignations, we have 17. Retirements, we have 4. And amendments, we have 2. That's for classified and exempt personnel.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Otto, how do you vote? Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that item passes 5-0. Instruction report.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, take a vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That item passes 5-0. Finance report A.
Move approval? Second.
Any discussion? Do our vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Finance report B.
Move approval?
Do we have a second?
Aye.
Mr. Otto, seconds. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, recuse myself from participation in finance report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Any further discussion? We'll take a vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes 4-0 with one abstention. Business department report.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take a vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Purchasing and contracts report.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll take a vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. We'll move on to other items, superintendent items. Uh, student discipline, Dr. Baker.
Thank you. Members of the board, as a representative from Student Placement Services, I'm recommending expulsion of the following two students from schools within the district and I will take them separately. Student number 331, this student would be expelled under Education Code 48900C and would not be eligible to apply for readmission.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Take our vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That first student passes 5-0.
Thank you. The second student, student number 197, this student would be expelled under Education Code 48900M and would not be eligible to re, to apply for readmission until after January 2023. However, Student Placement Services has made the recommendation that this student be expelled with a consideration for a suspended expulsion with an opportunity to, to attend another school within LBUSD.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Take our vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So that second student passes 5-0 as well. Uh, we added item 19.2, administrative assignments.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez, these are short-term assignments to support Hughes Middle School through the duration of this school year until Principal Steinhauser returns. So I recommend Danielle Armstrong Lee, who is currently the Assistant Principal at Bancroft to Acting Principal at Hughes on the main campus. I recommend Maynor Montiel, Assistant Principal at Hughes, to Acting Principal on the North Hughes Campus. And Daniella Manole, a program facilitator at Hamilton, to Acting Assistant Principal at Bancroft, at the dates recommended.
Do we have a?
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll take our vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
I also vote aye, so those administrative assignments pass 5-0. New business, board policy 6163.2, animals at schools. Do we have someone speaking to? Do we have anyone speaking to this, Dr. Baker?
I can speak to it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Dr. Simon, yes.
Thank you, uh, Board President.
Hold on, Dr. Simon, I'm going to give Mr. Otto a hard time here. Moving approval on an item we haven't heard yet, Mr. Otto. That's a nice one.
I'm willing to be open-minded. We had to have a motion on the floor.
Which shows his confidence in the board.
That's right. The floor is yours, Dr. Simon.
Thank you, uh, Board President, Dr. Benitez. So board policy 616, 6163.2, animals at school speaks to what has been our practice for years. Um, I think now we've just, um, have worked to formalize, um, our processes and protocols. Um, for example, uh, the board policy really speaks to having animals in school for instructional purposes as well as animals specifically in the service of a student with a disability. So it provides broad information for our parents to understand, understand the process for, um, allowing a service animal onto the school side and even informs our teachers of how to bring a service animal on campus for instructional purposes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. Uh, now I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let, now we can take a vote, Mr. Otto. How, how would he vote? It's your vote, Mr. Otto.
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Little drama on the board tonight. I also vote aye. So this ubiquitous but important item passes five-zero. Thank you. We will move on to our report of board members. Let's start with Ms. Kerr tonight.
Thank you, just a brief report. I wanted to thank AAUW, which is the American Association of University Women, who held a STEM conference event at Soto High School on Friday afternoon. They had great sponsors and women in all kinds of STEM fields, giving workshops to our middle school students who rode buses to get there. And I really want to shout out the teachers who said yes to chaperone an event at four o'clock on a Friday. They've gone over and above this year, we know that, and that was one thing. It was, it was a delight to see them and they were excited to be with them still on Friday. So thank you to that group for continuing to support our, our women in STEM, especially relevant as we start Women's History Month. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Ms. Craighead?
Yes, thank you. Just to piggyback on that report, the Women in STEM Conference that was hosted by the AAUW, the keynote speaker was a former Long Beach Unified student, Taryn Williams. And she spoke about the challenges that she's faced and her message to our middle school girls was that no matter what your circumstances are, no matter how bad things are, it's temporary and you can get over it. And she talked about the things that she's faced and how she's been able to get over it. And she was just fabulous. She graduated from Wilson in 2005 and knows my son who graduated from Wilson in 2005. So that was pretty exciting. I had a chance to talk to her afterwards. So I was very happy about that.
Diana, can I say one quote that you said that reminded me? I think she said something like, you're not, she told these, these young girls, you are not defined by your worst day. And it was one of those moments, middle schoolers, especially on a Friday afternoon, are a little chatty. And she said that and there was a little bit of a, we can do this. So, thank you, I just remembered that.
Yeah. No, thank you for adding that because she had so many wonderful messages for our kids. And it was, another one was, don't let other people define you. Know your own worth. And that's a good reminder, even for us adults that might have been around for a while. But yeah, I thought she did a great job. Real quick, happy birthday to my daughter. She's twenty-six today. I know, isn't that exciting? Also, I celebrated Tuesday, two-two, two-two at Bircham. And I'd like to thank the principal, Ms. McCrudes, for inviting me and letting me spend some time with the Bircham staff, who all wore tutus, by the way, I hope that's legal, but they were all in their tutus for the kindergarten, first and second grade parents. It was their first opportunity to socialize on campus. It was all outdoors, it was good. Socialize on campus and they had a taco truck and it was so wonderful. So many families took advantage of the opportunity to be there in person and celebrate this unique numerical day.
Speaking of numbers, how many tacos did you have, Ms. Craighead? And what kind?
I am not telling you how many tacos I had, but let me just say it was a Taco Tuesday and that's all.
Thank you, Board Member Craighead. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. I'm just gonna give out two quick shout-outs. First, I wanted to send a big congratulations to the scholarship winner for The Power of Truth. I talked about it last board meeting. And we got four students in the Long Beach Unified School District who were awarded scholarships. We had three, or was it three or four from Dooley in particular, and then one from Beach. So really, really cool stuff. It was exciting to be a part of it, and so I just wanted to send them a big shout-out. And then I also wanted to say, congratulations, we got a pair of twins at Cabrillo High School that are now been inducted into the National Honor Society over at Cabrillo High School. So really exciting stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Otto?
Thank you. Thanks. Well, this is the last, last of Black History Month, and I wanted to take this opportunity to ask that we honor someone who has worked with the Long Beach Unified School District for a long time now, and I really think deserves this recognition. It's Carolyn Bell. Carolyn is a true African-American hero and deserves to be honored by the Long Beach Unified School District because of her personal history and her contributions to the Long Beach Unified School District and the juvenile justice system here in the city of Long Beach. Carolyn grew up in Long Beach with her seven sisters and three brothers. She attended Lincoln Elementary School and then Stevenson Elementary School, and then matriculated to Franklin Middle School, where her mother worked in the cafeteria and I understand ran the cafeteria back then. She then matriculated to Polly High School, where she was a cheerleader and student body president. Her best friend was my colleague Eric Miller's mother, and they were actually in each other's weddings. She said she's known Eric since he wasn't here.
My mom was pregnant when she was getting married, and so I was at the wedding, just, you know, just was a little, let's say, covered.
Carolyn's sister Linda married Carl McBride, the son of Long Beach NAACP founder and longtime Long Beach civil rights leader Ernest McBride, who, as we know, was, was named, we have McBride High School is named after. After graduating from Polly High School in 1978, she attended Long Beach City College for one year and then transferred to the University of Laverne, where she earned her Bachelor of Arts degrees and started the first black student union, which included her two best friends, who were Hispanic and Pakistani. So I don't think it was a completely black student union, but, but anyway, she, she's proud of that, she's proud of that accomplishment in her life. She then married, had two children, and then went to work for the, the Long Beach Bar Foundation as an administrative assistant. And then in 2005, she was elevated to the position of coordinator of the Short Stop Program. And then in 2007, she became the executive director of the entire Long Beach Bar Foundation. At the Long Beach Bar Foundation, she has focused on keeping kids out of trouble by participating in Short Stop and other programs that she has helped create over the years, many in partnership with the Long Beach Unified School District. Short Stop is a powerful intervention program for first-time offenders. In 1993, when Short Stop was founded, clients were referred to the, to the Short Stop Program by the juvenile justice referees at the courthouse. They were like the judges. And eventually, though, the Los Angeles County Probation Department made those referrals. But in 2012, the probation department said they didn't have enough money to keep referring these juveniles to the Short Stop Program. And so Carolyn reached out to the Long Beach Unified School District. She began working with the School Attendance Review Board, which after referrals from the School Attendance Review Team, referred Long Beach Unified School District students to Short Stop and has continued to do so. The program has grown to include the Paramount and Bellflower Unified School Districts because students who commit crimes don't always live in Long Beach, and she wanted to be inclusive of everyone. And then under Carolyn's leadership, the Short Stop Program has become the premier restorative justice program for juveniles in Long Beach. The program consists of two classes, who, two weeks apart, at which parents are required to attend along with their students. The first meeting begins with a full index client interview, which also includes the client students. The first meet, the, then the students are taught about, at that meeting, the students are taught about the criminal justice system and the citation that they've been given and the consequences if they don't participate in the program. The session is followed by homework and a second meeting, which focuses on positive reinforcement. After completion, most of Short Stop, most students are given the option of participating in an umbrella of services also available through the Long Beach Bar Foundation, including counseling, which lasts for ten weeks, and then the Juvenile Emotional Management Program that connects students to mentors for helping conflicts, the development of life skills and personal techniques for overcoming obstacles. And the counseling is designed to improve coping skills for the students and improve family relationships. The Juvenile Emotional Management Program lasts for eight weeks. And so you can see, this isn't just a one-and-gone thing. This is something that goes on over a long, long period of time and really is transformational in the lives of these students. Recently, Carolyn decided to move to more closely align Short Stop's approach to restorative justice and social emotional learning principles. Today, Short Stop emphasizes that participants must publicly identify and acknowledge their past mistakes, demonstrate that they have learned from those mistakes, take identifiable and shared steps to make sure that those mistakes are not repeated, and this includes a thorough personal inventory and, when appropriate, making amends to the, to their families and even directly to those whom they may have harmed, although that's not required. Students are required to write an essay about what they have learned in the Short Stop Program. And so this is obviously also a learning opportunity for, for the students. And the results have been terrific over the years. I've been able to watch this personally in my own professional life, and she's made a tremendous contribution. She's also helped develop mentorship opportunities for Cambodian students in the Long Beach Unified School District with the help of the United Cambodian Center in the city of Long Beach. Carolyn has a lifetime of giving back to the city of Long Beach where she grew up and has lived or worked her entire life. I personally want to, to acknowledge Carolyn Bell. I know she's watching on team now, because I talked to her before this meeting started, for her work in service to others and in celebration of Black History Month. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Thank you for that and thank you to Carolyn on behalf of our board and our school district for all your contributions to the betterment of our students' lives, our families and our district in general. Well done, Mr. Otto. I think I'm up here. So I got to spend this morning with our Whittier Wizards at Whittier Elementary School. I was a guest reader and I got to read for a few classes, "Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus." It's one of my daughter's favorite books, too. I had an amazing morning there. Thank you to Principal Jespersen and the entire staff. We had a lot of community involvement and community members come out and read for our Whittier Wizards. The best part of it is obviously the students engaging and participating along with, with our reading. So, you know, those, those are the beautiful things that happen every single day at our schools and, and the amazing impact that our educators are having every day with our students and families. So thank you, Principal Jespersen and the Whittier Wizard family for that invitation. I wanted to take a, a moment to share some thoughts on our community visioning sessions. Dr. Baker, Mr. Suarez and I, and our entire interpretation team, were there as Mr. Otto and I co-facilitated this past Saturday's Community Visioning Session at Renaissance. We have another one coming up. It will be our fourth at Jordan. And I wanted to thank the community members that came out to share their thoughts with us. And I want to highlight the importance that these community visioning sessions are having and will have for our district. Based on our community's vision, we will set board goals. And based on those board goals, that will frame our strategic planning for the next three years. So our conversations at these sessions are the basis for our priorities as a district. And we had a great turnout, but I'm, you know, compelled to continue encouraging our community members, our community stakeholders, our students. We had four students there this Saturday with us to participate. These are not the only opportunities to participate, but we need to hear from you. And we need to hear your thoughts around three areas. The first is, what are your hopes and aspirations and your dreams for our students in LBUSD? The second is around what we want students to know and be able to do in the fifth, eighth, and by the time they graduate, twelfth grade. The third is really abroad, how do we bring out the best in each and every LBUSD students? So we have a portal open. You are more than welcome to participate online with us, and it's under our Board of Education, part of our school, of our website, Community Visioning. The, oh, there it is. LBSchools.net/visioning. Thank you, Board Member Kerr. I encourage everyone and anyone that's able to come out. I encourage our community partners, who were all sent invitation to encourage their staffs and the community members that they serve, to come out to our community visioning sessions. We have two more. Like I said, one is this coming Saturday at Jordan. And then our fifth one is when, Dr. Baker?
Monday at 6:00 PM at Cabrillo High School.
Perfect. So again, this is an opportunity for us to engage with you, listen, learn, and shape the future of our district and ensure that we continue empowering every single student in our district every day. So thank you, Mr. Otto. I know that my colleagues here are each facilitating sessions, so I, I kind of wanted to open it up for any of our, my colleagues here to share thoughts, you know, things that have stood out from these community visioning sessions. Anything we want to share for, with our community members so that we can continue to continue encouraging them to participate in our community visioning sessions.
As we talk about, and we have two left. We have one scheduled for this Saturday, and then we have another one scheduled on Monday. Saturday's at Jordan, like you spoke to, at 1:00 PM. And then the last one is on Monday at Browning High School at seven, correct?
At Cabrillo.
I'm sorry.
At six.
Yeah, I have an event at Browning. That day, my apologies, but yes, Cabrillo, six.
Ms. Kerr, Ms. Craighead, Mr. Otto, any, anything that we want to share from our community visioning? These are our meetings, so this is an opportunity for us to talk to our community members.
Well, I'd like to thank the people that have come out and attended the meetings and participated and shared their visions for the district. It's very enlightening to find out what people want, what's important to them. And that's how we're going to shape our goals is by collecting this information. So we need more people to participate so we can refine those ideas and whittle them down to just a handful. So I would really encourage, you know, people to have their voices heard. And also, one of the things I've heard is that it's nice to have FaceTime with board members. And we haven't had, you know, FaceTime in a while, so, so this is all good. But it is nice to see our community members and parents and students come out and engage with us and, and just express their, you know, wants and needs for their students.
Thank you, Ms. Craighead. Mr. Otto?
Reached out to a number of organizations throughout the city that have some interest in the Long Beach Unified School District. Last week, we had the Assistance League show up at one of the meetings. We've reached out to healthcare providers and others who really have a stake in the children in this community. And it's very important, if you are a member of such an organization and you have some ideas for us, to come on down to these last two sessions and tell us what you're thinking about or what your observations have been over time about what's going on at the Long Beach Unified School District. Because like Mr. Benitez said, or Dr. Benitez said, this is your opportunity to help shape what we're gonna do in the future, get these ideas out. It will be a part of our strategic plan. And we have these two sessions on Saturday and Monday. And try and get it into your schedule to do that, because it's very important to help us move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Ms. Kerr?
Sure, I was gonna remind folks, Saturday, 1:00, Jordan High School. North Long Beach friends and organizations, we'd love to have you come out, students, come out and talk about this. We know that as we move farther in this process, we're gonna start to narrow our goals around student outcomes and some really specific data. But the community input and the family input and the student input helps with the context of the why and the how we want our students to learn as well. So. So we're gonna want specific goals to be met academically, but come tell us the ways in which you want them to be learning those things on campus, the atmosphere that surrounds them, uh, the care with which folks bring to the classroom. All of those things are important to us, so we'd love to see you out at Jordan, uh, at one o'clock on Saturday, or at Cabrillo on Monday at six.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Um, Dr. Benitez, can I just add, what a great opportunity on Saturday for people to come and see the progress at Jordan. Come and see the campus. Go uptown. Have a look. You'll be impressed.
Nice plug. Thank you, board members. Uh, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Baker.
Thank you. I have a few announcements, and then I'm going to pass to Dr. Brown to provide a little health and safety update this evening. So the first is, on Saturday, before you go to the community visioning session, if you have an incoming kindergarten student, or just want to know about the district's, um, kindergarten programs and early learning, please come to the last of the kindergarten festivals. It will be held from nine to twelve at Bircham Elementary. And not only are there many free things, books, backpacks, community resources, um, there are opportunities for students who haven't been in a classroom in this way to interact with teachers, and to participate in a math workshop or a reading workshop, and feel what it feels like to be, um, a child in transitional kindergarten or kindergarten. So you can start your day at Bircham from nine to twelve, and then go right up to Jordan for the community visioning. Um, a few other announcements. On March eighth, our Human Resource Services and Equity Leadership Talent Development Recruitment Fair will be held. Last year, um, was held virtually. The year before, I think we had over five hundred participants. It's a really critical way for candidates who are considering education, or getting ready to graduate from programs, or that are interested in our district, um, to come and hear about what is available for their learning and career journey in Long Beach Unified School District. And then, let's see, March is a busy month. We celebrate three things: Women's History Month, Developmental Disabilities Month, and Social Worker Appreciation Month. And lastly, since you recognized your daughter's birthday, I'll just say happy birthday, Mrs. Craighead. Tomorrow is your birthday, so thank you for being with us on Birthday Eve. Also, I do want to recognize, we had an NFL legend also participating in, um, the event at Whittier. Uh, he was a guest reader. Willie McGinnis was a guest reader, and, um, virtually, and he read alongside an author of a book, so great participation by our community. And I will turn to Dr. Brown to end this evening with a little update on the city of Long Beach and our implementation of health and safety guidelines.
Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening. It's been referenced earlier tonight and messaged earlier this week that there's been a change in our local and state health order regarding the masking mandate. So effective March twelfth, masks are no longer required, but are strongly recommended in our school facilities and buildings. And we've been asked if masking is required until March twelfth. The answer is yes. We will contend, continue to honor the health order until we reach that morning of March twelfth, should there be any Saturday events on our campuses. Thank you to the Long Beach Health Department for being great partners with us, and for the correspondence throughout the week that moved us to this point, and going forward, we will continue to activate on and implement the guidance of the California Department of Public Health, and specifically our Long Beach Health Department.
I was gonna ask you, Dr. Brown, can you just highlight what hasn't changed in terms of, um, protocols?
Sure. There was really no other changes to what has happened, so we will continue with group tracing. Um, as it's been happening over the last, uh, several weeks, we will also continue to test athletes as required. Unvaccinated staff will continue to test. There were no other substantive changes. Uh, the masking, the change around the masking requirement, um, was the noteworthy change this week.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Any other questions? Okay, announcements. Any announcements? I have one. Our Milliken Boys and Polly Girls basketball teams have advanced to the second round of the state playoffs, so they're both playing at home tomorrow, Dr. Camarino. So if you have a chance to go out and support our Boys and Girls Basketball Teams, um, that should be fun, uh, tomorrow. If we have no other announcements, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn tonight.
So moved.
Thank you. Good evening, folks.